So, welcome to the South Arlington School Board. Our first order of business is to elect a chairperson and clerk. So, I would first like to entertain a motion for someone who would be in that position.
Oh, Elizabeth, you chair it?
Second.
So, I have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anyone opposed? I hear none. So, congratulations Elizabeth. And I'm going to rearrange the chairs and the name pairs. And Dan, you're going to shift down too if you don't mind. That'd be great.
I like this.
Just so you're getting comfortable.
Do you need a Jon Stewart seat? So, you'll be just fine.
All right. We now move on to an election of clerk. Do I have any nominations for clerk?
Yes, I have them now. Your partner will vote.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You get to move your chair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We need to designate a school board member to sign contracts on behalf of the board. This has historically banned the clerk, but I will entertain other motions.
Aren't you going to do this next time if you don't have one?
I was ready to change my name to a symbol.
Sherry.
Yeah. Martin, are you willing to do this?
Yes.
Do we have a motion nominating Martin as a designated school board member to sign contracts on behalf of the board?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll give it to his friends.
I'd like to officially welcome Dan Fleming, who is our newest board member and serving out the eight-month term that was vacated by Rich Cassidy. And also want to thank my colleagues. I appreciate the opportunity to step into some very big shoes of Rich Cassidy and then we'll need your support over this next interim period and look forward to continuing to work. All right, I'll open this up to comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. Any comments? Seeing none, I will move on to agenda item number six, an update on the Howard Center permit to open a methadone clinic.
Yeah, I just want to give the board again, this has been an ongoing update for board members. Again, our current environmental deal is still in play. There has been some communication of discovery items that have been back and forth and we're in that process now. It's come to my understanding, although not validated yet, that it's very close to opening, if not within the next couple of days. It perhaps could have opened today, I don't know. But it is very clear that it's imminent into the opening. I will be sharing a few pieces of information around school safety and campus security that will be relevant to this conversation. So, that's all I have at this moment as it relates to that.
Just a relevant issue, reform-based codes, committee. They're going to be starting to look into non-reforming, non-conformies they call it. It looks like they're starting tomorrow on non-conforming structures. That's not a big deal. But at some point, I guess sooner rather than later, we may be talking about non-conforming uses. And I raised, I believe the last week, the concept of looking into more suggestion to reform-based codes as far as the safety zones around the schools. So, we probably want to move that up. Secondly, Paul Connor of the city suggested, actually he and I in the talking suggested that we have a discussion between the district, some administration, maybe or somebody, and Paul and others to talk about this concept and try and move that conversation. And I've asked him to proceed and try and schedule something, but I asked him on a strategy.
I saw that one, I think it's good. That is, I think that is a great follow-up to our previous conversation around, you know, thinking about the move forward and due diligence around that work. And that still is in play for us and certainly, I agree, we need to probably up that to make sure that from our perspective, we're getting the types of language and our interest best presented. So, that is currently in play. I'll push that up and see if we can get a quicker response.
On that note, is that an item on the stern committee agenda?
It is. It is. Both the methadone clinic and the F-35 are both on the agenda.
And how many non-conforming uses in reform-based codes?
That's not, that's not on there. It is form-based codes, open space, all of the listed interim zoning committees is on there.
Thanks. Any other comments? All right, we'll move to item number seven, the F-35 environmental impact. Just by way of background on this, the board submitted a letter to the air force in May of this year with some of the concerns that the district had relative to the initial environmental impact study. And we had designated one of our board members, Martin, to kind of go through the second draft of the environmental impact study and really determine whether or not the answers were adequately addressed the questions the board had at that time. So, the discussion tonight is really around the adequacy of the response to those questions in the second environmental impact study.
Just to clarify, Elizabeth, I think I accidentally sent this memo, it was a letter sent, why not send it?
Last week, thank you. Yes, in 2012, yeah. Thanks, Jill.
I think I heard that maybe there was correspondence going around or something saying that the board opposed it.
Yeah, we became aware of a brochure that I think was, is being distributed by the Stop the F-35 Coalition that indicated the school board, South Arlington School Board, had taken a vote opposing the F-35s. And that is not the case. We have not taken a pro or con position on the F-35s, really just represented the interests of the district in terms of getting adequate responses to the questions from the study. So, I think, Martin, if we could kind of open it up to your review of the study, that would be great.
Sure. Yep. It's similar to the concerns that were expressed in the way of 2012. I essentially went through the concerns we addressed. At that point, looked through the environmental, the revised draft of environmental impact statement including response to our comments to determine what still remained to be addressed. And essentially, there are three categories of our concerns that were not fully addressed. One is the consideration of noise impacts on the district schools and in particular, just not a robust enough consideration of what the impacts could have been, particularly cognitive abilities of learning and with respect to noise levels outside of the school. So, I know there was a report that was a center of interest at last night's hearing that was at Chamberlain. And I have referenced that particular report. The Air Force should address that report. I read that report and there certainly are some concerning issues in that report. But it's not completely clear from my level of abilities in dealing with noise impacts in life on whether it's completely applicable, car situation or not. But the bottom line is the Air Force should be considering that, disclosing the impacts and putting it before the public before they make a decision and the decision makers. There's a separate issue with respect to that which I'll get to in a moment. The other is the cumulative impacts on the school district. And the primary cumulative impact that I was addressing and that the Air Force has not addressed yet, even though we pointed this out once, is the effects of the increased noise, the increased zone where there's going to be 65 decibels and how that will work with the FAA's program for purchasing and demolishing causes. That, as far as it looks, that program could potentially increase, could lead to decreased population, to decrease tax base, to decrease enrollment. The point is that that wasn't really fully considered or that needs to be fully considered. And finally, mitigation measures are addressed very cursorily and should be addressed further, such as, there's mentions of burns and other kinds of things, but there's no real indication on whether that could work or assist. So, that's what I have in the letter. It essentially doesn't, it's not taken a position forward on, once again. It is leaning for the areas that we have concerns and we think that the analysis is On the issue of consideration of noise impacts on the district schools, perhaps this is something we should talk about for future agenda items. But I think from what I understand, that's something we should consider whether or not our F-35s, we need to take another look at noise impacts. Now, having said all this, I was not at the meeting tomorrow and I wonder if there's any additions or changes to the letter, generally folks in the viewing, Dan and Diane were there. Do we need to put anything else into the letter from what you've heard the last couple of days?
Just related to the research, it was mentioned last night that the most recent research on sound impacts on humans was done in 2002. And so, I think, you know, more current studies on the sound impact. They also referenced a study, I thought this was interesting, that was done back in 1972 by the EPA recommending the maximum sound as 55 for day, as a day-night average. And that ultimately, over the years, it kind of increased to 65 as a day-night average. And that was concerning. So, I don't know if there's any good in the D I S about the 1972 study, but...
The 1972 thing is, I just thought was actually the EPA position we took on noise.
And I think their recommendation was 55 as a day-night average.
Yeah, I don't know about that though, is I don't know, I think that was an EPA set limit, but it wasn't necessarily a monitored limit even around.
Yeah, the problem, one of the problems you have here is that the industry is quite different, there are complex developments. For example, the Air Force, people claim simultaneously that the F-35s are noisier than the F-65s because the noise level is larger on takeoff. But the average noise level is comparable or maybe less because of the way the operations are set up. And that takes it an averaging, it takes a complex.
The other thing, Martin, are special populations. So, people that might be more vulnerable even than sort of the typical person and impact on, you know, noise impact, but vulnerable populations. I mentioned that, people with special needs, young children, elderly. It was mentioned that in a NICU study that was done, I think it was 45 was the maximum sound limit for children in the area of intensive care unit.
They're in the womb too, it was.
Right. So, I didn't know if the D I S addressed anything about special populations.
It does. I can't see off the top of my head what exactly it says. It may have been just as much as recognizing that vulnerable populations in the area suffer more. I mean, it was not very much depth. But I'll double check, I'll look at the environmental impact statement again and try to progress these couple of things. Send out the date. So, we're a little bit of a short fuse here, are we, right? Well, I'll have to do the next couple of days and I'll send it out to David for, you know, final comments. And do we?
The 15th is the end, period end.
Yeah, I guess we postmark.
Actually, I believe it can be emailed as well, my understanding was.
So, and if we're going to be meeting on the 15th, do we need to take a vote for this? Or do we, can we just say today, once I've sent out a revised draft, these couple of items that Diane has mentioned that I can sign, do you want to approach that?
Was there anything else, Dan, you wanted to add relative to Martin's comment?
I think if you could approve it based on, the board approved Martin's work based on the comments, then I think it would be efficient.
More important is we can feedback on what's the guidance on school children's situations, school situations.
Well, so it sounds like if you could circulate a draft through David and then you could meet that deadline.
Right. But I will need to tell, wait until we do.
For board action.
Thank you, actually, for all the hard work too, Diane and Dan, for attending the meeting and learning, reviewing the I S.
And you too, because you were out, I think, meeting on the F-35. So, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday.
You all play your own special times.
Great. All right, we'll shift on to item number eight, contingency teacher elementary school duty to enrollment.
And this is an action item I'm asking for the board. I did provide you with some background information again at the last meeting. I just, you know, worked inform you about what I'm calling some concerned areas in our district, particularly at the three elementary schools. This action is actually requesting that you allow me the opportunity to hire a teacher that would go between kindergarten at Chamberlain and third grade at Chamberlain. Those are what I would say the most significant areas of concern at the present time for a teacher needs. And my note further went on to say that just the other highlighted areas of red remain concerns, but I do believe in working with the administrators unless significant changes in enrollment happen, that I would likely be serving those areas with some additional support by educators. I don't need your approval for that, I certainly want to inform you of that. Obviously, I have to work and stay constrained within the budget, but I certainly don't want to leave out that these are areas of concern as well. So, my specific action is for a kindergarten teacher to be, kindergarten and third grade teacher to be allocated to the Chamberlain School. This, as you know, there was a reduction that was made in at Chamberlain, which resulted in displacement as we needed an additional teacher at Chamberlain. So, likely the...
Central.
Central, thank you. It's likely then that if you approve this, that a teacher, if so desired, would probably stay back at Chamberlain and a new teacher would be hired at Central School. Changing the action, but just letting you know a little bit about the possible flow. Again, this would be a post-op position and obviously the individual would have choice to do that. So, that's my, that's my request. I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you have.
Can you tell us about the dynamics of the teacher commitment in the third grade?
Well, I will tell you from my perspective at Holly here, actually, I didn't ask you to be here, but this is a concerning area and, you know, principals are, you know, on all the time. I think it's less than favorable or less than optimal, but I think at the same time, you know, collaborating with Holly is that this is better than having no additional teacher. I think it takes some strategic planning and/or strategic shuffling of resources, but when we're in the place of, you know, really wanting to make sure students are starting out with, you know, really developmentally appropriate skills with reading and math, we can make it work. I would love to, if Holly, if you're okay to share a little bit of your thinking around this area that we've had, I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, so my thinking is that that person would be in the kindergarten classroom in the morning up until their lunchtime, supporting their literacy block primarily, but there's also, you know, depending on what's happening in that morning time. And then the kindergarteners have an hour of lunch and recess and their integrated arts are in the afternoon. Not so ideal if you're an integrated arts teacher and you have, you know, 19 or 20 kindergarteners in your art class. So that at that point, the teacher would shift to third grade and support third grade for the afternoon, which at this point is, will probably be their math time and then some other block of learning.
So, certainly, I think one of the things that's, is still positive, relational connections will happen, but they're less formative with, you know, two teachers versus one. And that doesn't mean that they don't have other adults in their lives that are helping them and are professional learning, but it does, it complicates some schedules. But I think on the deliverable of the education, I think we can continue to provide, you know, what I would say is a really excellent opportunity for the kids to continue to work.
And because we have actually, we're down three classrooms, we do have extra spaces. So, there is that extra space in the kindergarten wing, so we could, you know, pull students and break students up. And then in the afternoon, we have an extra space for that third grade.
So, typically when kids go to specials and then they come back to their classroom, what happens when those kids come back to their classroom and there's no, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just thinking about the dynamics of that. What parents are going to call them in that space?
Right. So, it means, you know, kindergarten, they have their integrated arts and then they come back for their math time. So, their math hour chunk of time will have 20 students during that time, which is, you know, kind of a different kindergarten. The other tricky piece is you've got kindergarteners who have adapted to one of two teachers who will now have a third teacher in the mix in the morning and what will that look like as far as, you know, I think it's a little easier when they're in third grade to kind of do that piece than when they're in kindergarten and so young and suddenly have another person in the morning and then we'll shift back to a third person in the afternoon. So, that's another piece.
And across the board right now in our schools, we're, you know, we're right in the 18 and 19 average across, and we average them out. And again, it's hard because we have these, you know, these higher numbers in certain cohort groups and mores and just dividing them by either two or three makes a pretty significant difference, but, so.
Other questions? From the public?
I'm Donna Casmera, I emailed everyone late last night, so I hope you might have thought about reading it. If not, then I'll give you my just two cents. I think my biggest concern continues to be looking at the numbers that my child in this third grade is probably going to stay split in 23 and 24 for three years. And in doing so comparatively, her peers in the other classrooms are highly likely to be in, you know, 19, 18, 19 or 20. And what's that going to be like for that group of kids who have for three years straight highly likely been at that level versus the, you know, 60% of her grade in sixth grade who have now had, you know, anywhere from 18 to 20 kids per teacher for three years? I think that's a significant, you know, difference in what our children are going to learn at that grade level. I think it's probably something Holly has also shared with you, that our 47 kids have some very significant challenges that maybe another group of 47 kids don't have. I think there are lots of groups of kids where you can put 23 in a class and it would be fine for many years. This particular group of children, I personally am afraid that my child who behaves properly, does fine in school, will probably get lost in the shuffle between all the kids who need extra help and there's not enough help for them. And then some of the kids who have many challenges to face and there won't be enough people for them to have, to help them be dealing with those challenges. And to think that's going to happen for three years potentially and then come middle school, I mean, and I think I'm one of the parents, probably one of the few, and I don't mean to pat myself on the back, I just know a lot of the parents that also do things at home with my child. I don't know that there are a lot that do and can. So, my concern is just that with this particular group of children, for them to only have a teacher coming in half the day, for some of them to be chosen to go out separately, they may be tormented at gym or on the recess or at lunch because they're the special kids that got pulled or however that's going to be handled. I would love to know how that's all going to pan out. But, you know, that's my concern is that I think the decision you're making tonight is going to affect my child and her 46 peers for three years and not just one. Thank you.
I think, you know, again, the concerns, you know, these are hard decisions for us to make. I think your current view forward without having any more information is, you know, is right on. Part of what you ask us to do and Holly to do is to evaluate student learning. And that's not just, you know, the outcomes specific to reading, writing, math, et cetera, but also about behavior. So, we will be watching that and this, as we move through this, beginning of this year and progress, part of our work will be to, and for me then, to inform the board on what I think is going to be most appropriate. And so, I would like for people not to walk into hard fact issues and say it's going to remain for three years. I know that's not exactly, but you're kind of envisioning that.
Right, exactly.
The board asked me to come back and me with Holly to come back with what's going to be most appropriate. And if the results that we're getting say we need to be doing something with that particular grade, then I will certainly be advocating so. So, again, I appreciate your comments as well.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, your name is?
Kim Fontaine. I have a unique perspective, I think, because I'm the only student that had, he was in second grade class, that shared teacher as it was. And that was difficult for me, not, I don't think so much for him, but for me, for continuity, there was like a split in the classroom because they, one did morning and one did afternoon. And I missed the beginning of this discussion, but I guess I'm even questioning why it's a discussion given that the numbers are already so high? Why isn't a third full-time teacher already in place? Or, you know, why is the discussion that it's halftime as opposed to full-time when the numbers are already so high? And again, I missed the beginning of that discussion, but I think having a part-time teacher isn't ideal for the kids or for the parents because it's, you're losing some of the continuity of how they teach and how the conversation is between the parent. And again, it may have been specific to these two teachers, but it was just, it was more difficult for me as a parent, I think. And I was in the classroom often enough and know that there are a lot of behavior issues for this particular group of children. And I do have a big concern that that number is so high and for a child that, he didn't have significant issues, but he had issues because there's so many kids in a small space that that's a lot of kids in one classroom. And that's a big concern for me this year. And I've never even come to one of these meetings because I just let y'all do what you do, but it's a, it's a concern for me at this, you know, point because I think that that's just too many kids in the small space. Even if you set them up or, you know, worked them in half and half or whatever, it's just, at some point, they're all going to have to be together in the same room. And that's just, it's a lot of kids at a small age, at a small, at a young age.
So, let me just, we appreciate you coming, Kim, and you're welcome to come to any school board meeting, we'd love to have you. But I think, you know, this is, this is not, this is not the board, this is my recommendation, you know, me working with Holly to the board. As you probably know, we have throughout our district, we have several class sizes that are up in the, you know, higher numbers. And so, how we go about adding resources, again, when you have 30 in one class and you divide it by two, it's 15, it goes to the smaller side. And we have, we have a lot of those kind of metrics that are happening throughout the district. Our decision at this point, my decision or recommendation to the board with Holly is to, yes, we're mindful of the class sizes currently at Chamberlain in kindergarten and grade three, particularly the kindergarten is the first year and that third grade class we're hearing and we know from Holly that that's a concern. And so, this is a way in which I believe to the board is an appropriate way to address at this time for this upcoming year to address it. And as I said to Donna earlier, just before you came in, or I think just after, was that we're going to continue to evaluate the progress that students are making. And that's going to be through the lens of Holly and her teachers for us, for me, to communicate to the board how we continue to move forward. So, I know that from most perspective, adding, just adding more resources is the, is the desired answer. But I also have to, you know, on behalf of the board, looking at all of the financial obligations as well and to the rest of the community. So, it's a fine balance. I'm here to support kids, I'm here to make, make sure we're doing the right thing and Holly's with me on that. Delicate balance, we're watching. Okay?
I appreciate that answer, but I'm not sure that you actually answered the question of why is it that it's even a discussion if you're looking at the guidelines that are set for it and you do the math, if you divide 47 by two, it's too high. So, I guess it seems like a no-brainer to me to just add a teacher and I, and I understand that that's not that simple.
Right.
But I guess what is the rationale for maybe not having?
But I guess what is the rationale for maybe not having that be the desired answer for you?
Kim, it's really about the resource and it is about adding a teacher that's going to go between those two grades, and I believe, again, when you average it out over the course of the day or a week, that percentage obviously from twenty-three and twenty-four in that particular grade is going to be lowered because there's critical periods of time in their instructional day where they're going to have fewer numbers of students being served by a teacher, and so that gets to what I believe is providing the students the education that we owe them. So I get that at times they're going to be together, just as Holly said, during certain periods of their unified arts, they're going to be together, we know that, and again, we're going to be watchful of how our students are responding or what we need to be doing to make sure they're continuing to benefit from that experience. Again, I have, I have other areas, you know, in the district that are also in these areas of concern as well, so.
Good, yeah, this, if I can just make a quick comment, this is a decision, staffing decision, a decision the board really looks to our administrators to give us some guidance on. We, the board are not educators and we really do need to rely on the superintendents and the administrators' recommendations. I will tell you, we do routinely ask for follow-up on how things are going and whether or not those decisions have been implemented effectively and are in the best interest of kids, so on behalf of the board, I know I can make that commitment from a follow-up standpoint. So on that note, unless there's other discussion, do I have a motion that would support the administration's recommendation to add a contingency teacher at the elementary school due to enrollment? Second, all in favor? I'm on. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, everyone.
Before we move on, I just want to just let the board know, there was, there's several folks, parents, children that have been kind of waiting based on waiver, and I, my desire was to wait and to understand and be clear around where allocated resources were going to go based on my recommendation, so given that you just acted on this, I will be connecting with the parents that currently have been awaiting waivers to either stay at Chamberlain, most specifically to stay at Chamberlain, so I will be getting back to them, I just wanted to let you know that.
Great. We'll move on to agenda item number nine, the high school enrollment decisions related to Act 150 and Act 129.
So I've given you some information, and this was, this came out in part two of distribution to you folks, and I don't know how much time you had to read it. Again, this was also provided to you in just general overview at our last meeting, June nineteenth, I believe, and so I have remained consistent on my recommendation for you folks, and that is, under the Act 150, Act 129 transition agreement, that I am asking for two non-resident cap exemptions, and these are for individuals who were currently, had siblings in the system and then the system changed, and so I'm asking again for, the exception of a student in that particular to be able to follow a sibling, and then a pre-Act 129, a student who was current, was enrolled in South Burlington, moved to another location, and really for all intents and purposes would have gone through all of the appropriate changes to remain there, and so those are the two exceptions under the, what I'm saying, the regular South Burlington High School program. And then my other recommendation is regarding the Big Picture program, and the Big Picture has been authorized to have its separate cap of thirty, and so my recommendation or desire is to open up four of the lottery slots that are on the, on the opportunity list, for four non-resident students to fill that, and then four to be filled remaining with South Burlington students, so bringing the total to thirty. We currently have, as the chart indicates below, we have twenty-two currently in the program. Our exposure for the future is, as I've said before, I've looked at the exposure of, you know, future siblings coming along, and again, this, I haven't put specific wording into this practice because we have not, you know, granted approval. If you do, then I think, you know, I have some sunsetting of practices that will need to happen. Again, just to be clear about that, I think we're going to really need to make sure that what are we going to do next year when our Act 150 students mature or graduate, graduate out, our number's going to go down, what are we going to do with the capacity in that, either the, our, our program, Act 129, 150 students, or those in the Big Picture program, and there's going to need to be some clearer guidelines, I believe, set up to determine how we're going to fill that. As you know, money won't be following any students that we bring in unless there's a lot of change. I do think this provides a credible move-forward objective to work with our legislators to create some change, at the same time, I think it's sensitive to individuals that made decisions, you know, when they had no knowledge of a law change that was pending, and for us in the education field ourselves that track fairly regularly, you know, legislative changes, we were, we were caught off-guard with the 129 and 150 change as well. So that's my recommendation, I'm happy to answer any questions that you folks have.
A couple of questions, David. Under recommendations, the second bullet point, the four additional slots, just to clarify, would those just be from the waiting list of students that are on the list for Big Picture?
Correct.
Or the entire?
At this point, the waiting list was pretty long, I think it's appropriate for us to be going off of a waiting list. I think that to open that up significantly changes the, you know, the mindset, so those individuals that were in the Big Picture program looking to, again, I think, need to be considered. I don't know exactly, because of some of the language and the uncertainty of pending changes, I don't know from the Big Picture folks whether or not there were people that asked, called, said, and they were told, you know, there's nothing we can do. So I don't think the waiting list as in the pure form is as accurate as I would like it to be, and I will need to ask specifically to Patrick and Jason Pushner to say, "The individuals that inquired to get into the program that you said, 'There's no way you can get in, you're only going to have to go to your legislative representative to get a change,'" that, I think, is a delicate, we're going to need to look at some of the inquiries there.
I was just thinking, if it's considered two schools with two caps, that there should be two waiting lists and not just one?
Right.
And to kind of maintain some integrity with the?
Yeah, correct, and that's, that will be a change of practice that we're going to have to be really sensitive to. Right now, I'm saying I want to go off the waiting list for all of our tradition, you know, if the student wants to come to the high school regular program or into the Big Picture program. However, Big Picture, I think, is in and of itself a little bit different because we essentially turn people away before they could even inquire. So I just think, I will need to, again, pending your, your decision here tonight, I'll have to come back, I think, and say, "This is how we're going to move forward specifically around that." And again, it doesn't mean that four will just automatically get added, it's not, it's likely, perhaps it is, because again, there's other criteria that needs to involve for Big Picture as well.
The second question I have is, would there always be a spot, no matter what, for a South Burlington student that wants to go to Big Picture, if they, if it was a good decision, or would they be bumped out, right?
Yeah, so currently, right now, again, from Jason and Patrick, that the number is at twenty-two. They thought initially it was going to be higher than that, but again, through kind of the process by applications, they're at twenty-two, they think four is a very reasonable number and will have room for them, well into the future for those students that we have currently enrolled in our programs. Again, that's students that are moving over from the middle school and those that are migrating to the system, so they, they believe that four will allow for that.
But next year, that could be adjusted if there's more of the name from South Burlington schools.
Correct.
Next year, because four is not necessarily setting it.
That's correct.
It's coming in, right?
That's correct, right, so next year, we'll, we may have, out of the twenty-two, five graduate and opens up the remaining additional, we may say then we want to keep seven slots for South Burlington based on what we know, and we'll open up, again, per your, per your approval, three more, or still a cap of thirty.
See, for whatever reason, I thought you were going to keep our, but is there a cost to this configuration?
There is, there is a cost, I think, for every one of these students, and again, what's in front of you is the, is the eight, the ten students possibly, and I don't, I don't believe we'll fill up all of the eight in the Big Picture, certainly the two, and part of the two, they come to us and technology is one of the things that we are, we're wanting to support, so for each of those students, there's those, you know, those costs of a technology or one-to-one device that we would be needing to pick up.
And that's essentially it?
It's a, again, I'm, I'm just, round numbers, around a $900, you know, a cost per, per student, and remember, I, I think we have been firm around our work as a board that resources do need to follow students. That said, our current announced per pupil spending under Act 68 is the $14,000, and fourteen-four, to be exact, so there's a cost, and again, and I want to be clear about that, but I also, these decisions are being made based on a change that happened and a program that's very desirable to help kids.
But it sounds like the fixed cost that's going, the variable cost that's going to change is the technology, the rest of its fixed cost, and it's over a different number of people.
So, one of the reasons, one of the things we talked about is the poss, your recommendation was based on adequate notice not given the parents before, and so if, I just want to talk about the three other siblings that are currently, is your recommendation to include those in a sunsetting, or are we making that decision?
No.
Okay.
I wanted to just let you know kind of our exposure, I think it doesn't mean that they necessarily would come, but what is our exposure if, if our current cohort group is allowed and stays in, what's our exposure? And three currently would be our exposure, so if we're doing this now, remember with the understanding that siblings, you know, I don't think it was ever the intention of a mom or a dad to say, or a guardian to have one go off this way and then the other to have no choice, so just trying to be articulate about our exposure down the road doesn't mean that next year we can say, and it's likely there could be law change, there could be modification to the law, there could be exceptions made, there could be other agreements made with our, with our previous supporting Act 150 schools, you know, the list could go on, and, you know, that's certainly on the forefront for me with some of the work that we're going to be doing, both as a county and in the legislative body, so I just wanted to articulate to you that the exposure, I think if that had an exposure that was, you know, twenty-four, then I think we probably would be in a different place and we couldn't sustain, that would create, I think, a significant, you know, concern to me.
So David, are you recommending, you know, barring a legal change or some other agreement that might be negotiated, are you going to set a definitive end date to sunsetting that accommodates, you know, informing parents?
Yeah.
And, and that these criteria around siblings will be in place for two years, but not beyond that?
Right, and I think it is likely to be very specific to our exposure of those three. So it would sunset, so our exposure would, would be no longer than, unless there was, you know, a change where we would reevaluate how we're going to continue to do this.
And just to be clear on that, that addresses the issue of informing families that have that situation, but if a student starts at the high school, I'm saying that two years is really when this exception is allowed, but the student would be allowed to continue through.
Right.
And my one other question is, if, if a student takes one of these additional four slots in the Big Picture program, what is the possibility for them to change their mind and become a matriculated?
Yeah, we'll have to be really clear about that, that they're accepted into the Big Picture program and that matriculation back into the regular program will not be permitted.
Okay.
All right, again, I will work on that specific language with Patrick, again, that's part of the careful selection of the Big Picture needs to, needs to happen, and clarity around what happens if, and again, I hate to go there, but I think it's going to be needed to be fair and appropriate to all those, you know, the others on the waiting list into the regular program, so I believe that will definitely be, be critical.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? I guess one obvious question is, we don't know the waiting list, but is there anything within the criteria that you've recommended that creates exposure for the district with the existing waiting list?
I don't believe so, I think, I think we're okay, given, you know, given where we are. Again, individuals are current, these are individuals on the waiting list, so I think our exposure to that is, you know, obviously if they weren't on the waiting list, that would be a real problem, so I think we're fine, I mean, I'm not, again, I want to be clear, I'm not happy about where we are with this particular situation, it's not our desired state, I think it was appropriate where resources always follow kids, I'm disappointed that this has happened, and we have definitely been a school district that has modeled, what I would say, significant choice options. We've educated, you know, close to 200 students over the course of 10 years under this Act 150, and other districts in Vermont have about a fraction of that, and again, I think we've done it right for kids, and I'm disappointed that this change has come about this way, so we'll have to advocate for some change, so.
Any other comments from board or the public? Okay, I know you want action on this, is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation on high school enrollment decisions to include exceptions on siblings, the one relocation situation, and the opening up of four positions or four opportunities in the Big Picture program, is that satisfying?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to agenda item number 10, the administrative report on school safety and campus security.
So I do have, I do have a sh-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to thank you for your time, I'm fully aware that the question that you had on this put you in a very bad position on this, and I just wanted to say I appreciate all that you've done and the way you handled this, and I just appreciate when you choose kids, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I put some information at your, at your side, again, I want to circle back up to the methadone, and again, I think campus security, where individuals, you, the board, and community are concerned perhaps about the safety of students, so this kind of, I think, pulls this in. That said, if the methadone clinic wasn't going in, if that wasn't on the agenda, then I think this is still a relevant and important conversation to have with you, and I don't, I don't, I'm not going to touch on all of the things that we do, but I think it's important that I just share with you some of these highlights. So, under the area of school safety, again, I think most of you know, probably Dan, it's maybe new to you now, but one of the things that I think you should be happy about is that we do have crisis plans and we have crisis teams at every school that does involve key, key individuals in each school who have the knowledge and the ability to carry out what we would say appropriate responses to a variety of crises. In addition, you know, we don't just name the, name the groups, we actually bring them together, I'd like to say frequently, but we have a scheduled time where we're bringing them together, and we actually talk about, recognize, and audit some of our facilities around concerns for safety, as well as do what we call, you know, tabletop exercises, and I think some of you have heard this before, so I won't go into any great detail, if you'd like more, I'm happy to answer questions. I think the second part, again, has been evolving in our district for some time well before the knowledge of even the methadone clinic, and you've definitely, those of you that have been on the board for a good long time, and Dan, you've been coming, know that we've gone from pretty much open doors to restricted access, to conversations about cameras, to- gone from pretty much open doors, to restricted access, to conversations about cameras, to now buzzing in, and having to identify yourself and sign in, et cetera. So, this is what I'll say the next iteration suggestion or proposal that I have, wanting to share with you. Some of this does have some, some monetary costs, but some of it is also a change in practice, and I just want to quickly just go through these with you. I think, obviously, you know, as we audit and look around our building, I think lighting is always a concern. This being, the middle school, obviously, the, we're in, the, the north side of this school, as you know, is, has been an overflow traffic, or overflow parking for staff and for students, particularly from the high school, our younger students, younger licensed drivers who don't get into the lottery at the high school, do overflow into here with a, with a permit into the north parking lot of the middle school. So, the recommendation here is to really be mindful of increased lighting to the north side of the, the middle school, and the parking area specific. Again, I think anytime we have individuals going to and from a vehicle, I think it should be properly lit, not just for safety reasons, but all, also for foot traffic, you know, road conditions, et cetera. That said, lighting along what I will say the Dorset Street location as well, so, again, all along this side of, or the west side of the building, as you know, we also have a, a path in there that has a walking path, and if you have, maybe you haven't noticed, we've, we've worked to thin that, that area in the, what we'll call the wooded area, it was very, very hard to see through the, to see through the Dorset Street, and this is always a difficult issue, issue, because we, we want to be mindful not to disrupt the ecosystem, but we, you know, again, I gave the okay, we need to, you know, be able to see through that. So, we'll be increasing, I would like to increase some lighting along that path as well, again, just being mindful of better locations. Again, I'm, I'm inquiring about the cost of these, these emergency calling stations that you see at, you know, on college campuses particularly, and so I'm interested in knowing where those might be more strategically placed on the property or along Dorset Street, and again, I'm wanting to have, I will be having conversations with the city on perhaps shared cost, or, or helping us to do this.
Do those go to the police station?
They would, they, they are-
We don't have a campus.
They're very specific on where they go, the, the, the software in them is set up that I think they ring to the nine-one-one, and the nine-one-one rings to your local, your local police authority if you have it, so, they're, they're, they can be programmed and set up in that way, so.
But there's no school resource that's going to support that?
I wouldn't recommend that, I just don't think, we, we don't have the redundancy at this point in time, I certainly don't have it in the budget, you know, to be able to do that, where somebody would be answering that in a responsive way, twenty-four hours, seven days a week, I couldn't do it. Again, this would be part of the city conversation that, you know, again, these are ideas that I have right now, I'm in the, I'm in the process of costing these out for you, but again, just for discussion purposes tonight. Those of you who don't know, four hundred Dorset Street is the actual, the blue house that's just west of, or just east of this property, it sits right on, right up close to Dorset Street, we've had youth services in there some time ago. It's a, it's a house that we've maintained, and we try to keep up. My recommendation is currently our facilities department, which is housed in the south side of the high school, be moved to that location, and work out of that location, again, we have heat, we have electricity, we have all of the resources, but again, and costing that out as well, in addition to the facility folks, would also be the security, our security guard, our security presence would also be located out of that location, with kind of regular viewing, if you will, of Dorset Street and, and that surround, so that would be, again, that's a recommendation that I have as well.
What's housed there now?
No, nothing is in there right now, we, this past winter, we drained everything out, and basically just had it unoccupied, we definitely, we need to do a little bit of retrofitting in there, but wouldn't be significant, again.
It, it has been security in the past, though, right?
We did have, when youth services were there, Tom Frogga, some of you maybe remember him, so we, we did allow the police department and the youth services to be housed there when they were in a facility crunch, as you know, from the previous police location. So, they did, they did, they were housed there for a while, so again, it, it's certainly in reasonable condition.
Where's our current, our current resource officers in the high school?
He's in the high school, he has a shared office space in the, in the attendance office side, those of you who know the high school, you go into the main doors, it's on the left is the attendant's side, but primarily, he's either at the front desk area, or, you know, has a routine, and again, this would, my recommendation would also be to change the routine for that particular person, position, is to have more of a, kind of a stay put, and then a, a beat, if you will, or a, you know, walking kind of path, and again, just trying to be mindful of some of the added changes that are happening as a result. And then I get into some cameras, discussions of cameras, again, as you know, we have cameras currently on our locations, all five schools, and we have them in different places, it would be looking to add some additional cameras onto four hundred that would allow us to see and watch, and, and be mindful of that work. So, those are my, those are my, my kind of campus security recommendations. This year in the budget, I don't have any other security dollars associated with people, so that will be something that I will be looking at as we start the year out. Again, I'm kind of wanting to be proactive here in, in the work, and as we move forward, if it's not needed, or it's, again, I think these are good, these are still good decisions, kind of in the sequencing of campus security and safety.
So, so the cameras, would you work with either the police department or the city? Because presumably, I, I wouldn't imagine we can set up a camera looking down at Dorset Street off of our property. Maybe we can, but I, seems-
We could look at our parking lot, though.
Yeah, I think-
Well, yeah, but it might be nice to be looking down the street, I mean, if we can work with the police department and the city to-
Yeah, and again, a, a lot of this, again, with the, with Trevor, the police chief, and the interim city manager, Kevin Dorn, I've talked about, I'm going to spend some additional time with them, they currently, as you know, have access, when requested, to gain access into our system, and so that, that's, that's available, and-
Yeah, but that's-
We would work with them on, and we did work with them on the setting up of the, you know, the proximity of where the cameras view, obviously, there's criteria that you can and can't with interior cameras, they can't be aiming in places where, that, you know, are obvious, you know, bathroom areas and things of that nature, but, so we will, I mean, my recommendation will obviously work with them, I want to be compliant to the law, but I also want to be compliant to our students around rendering the ability to, to make sure they're safe and secure.
David, I just had a question about sort of behavioral procedural kinds of things that might be adopted, you know, I just think about cross-country season, and more than a hundred students running in that direction all at once at the end of the day.
Yep.
And will we, will there be any sort of changes in how we operate? I know it's been tossed around about closing the campus, as, you know, that, people have brought that up, so I just wondered about that.
No, I, I think definitely this is, again, I, I've thought about going further into the details of, you know, just what I would say good, good general public safety, you know, individuals walking to and from, you know, locations in the, in the darkness is not recommended, no matter where you are, that needs to certainly be instilled, but certainly adding lights and informing them is going to be important. I think during the co-curricular season, you know, in some cases, that's a, that's, that's an overwhelming number, on the other side, a single walking to dance is not going to be accepted, and, and whoever's in charge of these groups are going to be, need to be mindful of where they go, again, certainly in the beginning, and kind of the, the, the path or the, the route that they take will be important. So, I think the other part is, again, at this point, you know where we are with the methadone clinic, we currently have an appeal in, our desire is that it not open, it, if it does open and continues to operate, then we have some, some things that we're going to also need to collaborate on, I think, around good for all, and I think we, you know, I would want to talk with them a little bit about some assistance in certain, certain areas of this work, so.
So, so is this designed to address methadone clinic as well?
Yes.
All right, because a couple, I mean, there's a, a few things, in addition to cross-country, I mean, I think, you know, having a hundred people run down, there's no better than one, that gives a hundred targets for somebody who might be driving under the influence, and that's, that's where my biggest concern is, is, is potential increases for driving under the influence of drugs. So, the, the other factor is changing bus routes, because I don't think the neighborhood that walks now past that area at that time of day is going to be doing that anymore, or want, will want to be doing that, so I think we're going to have to accommodate them, perhaps with the bus route. And, and the big question still for me is, is whether campus can continue to be open, and what do we do about our young drivers who are driving to, to school? So, those are still kind of underdressed to me, and how can, can the open campus not just be shut down, but is there, can, can there be adjustments to that? Maybe I don't know enough about it, but, like, can we understand when the high-traffic times are for the methadone clinic, and not have an open campus during those times?
Well, I think there's, there's a lot of it, I'll put in the unknown, because I'm, you know, at this point, again, we'd like it to be considered not to open, and if it does, then I think there's some additional mitigation that would need to be worked on with the leadership of the methadone clinic and the Howard Center. That said, I did think about bus routes and, and the exposure to that, we currently do have route traffic where kids actually are not actually needing to pass there, and so it's actually reasonable for us to be able to continue with our current bus routing, and that said, as I said earlier, and I could have been a little bit more articulate about the, our security presence on four hundred, but part of that would be that they'll play a more major role, as opposed to those of you who come at the end of the day, you know, around pickup, you often will see, or the beginning of the day, you'll see, in this case, Jerry Normandin, who's out in the, in between the two parking lots, it's likely now that that position will change, to be in an area not only crossing, but, but eyes and vision for individuals that are coming and going along Dorset Street and San Remo. So, you know, that's part of what I, I'm calling, I don't think it's the right terminology, but the beat, you know, his beat, or his, his, his route that he'll, he'll travel and stay in the morning, and so, I'm, I, again, my concern is highly focused on the northern side of the campus, and I think with drivers, typically our drivers are coming into that area, they're going to be coming in, again, I don't exactly know the traffic patterns that are going to be, be present, but again, I, I think that what I'm trying to do is cover our bases to the extent that I can, the best possible way at the present time, until I learn more, and if I learn more, and it means they're going to be definitely up and running, then I'm going to, again, through you, I will be reaching out to them to say, I think we got to do, I'd like to do a little bit more here, so, or share the resources, et cetera. So, I, I, again, I, I'm not saying I've crossed all of the, you know, the, the pieces, but I've thought about the crossing, I've thought about the dance, the dance class, the cross-country, the track kids, the discussions with the coaches that are going to need to happen around, you know, again, I, I want to be careful, I'm, you know, around discrimi- these are individuals that need services, but I'm mindful of the safety of our children, let's be, you know, be mindful of how we can avoid risk at, to the best of our ability, so.
I just had a slightly different, broader, I mean, it's not broader, but have, have you folks seen or considered the, there's been a recent publication by FEMA, a guide for developing high-quality school emergency operation plans?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you folks have-
Yes.
And there's a, there's a whole section, which I think is the most controversial part of it, about active shooter situations, and so, so you folks have-
We have, we, we actually, I have two individuals that are enrolled in that, in the class currently, two employees that are currently enrolled, and will be part of the crisis planning team in, in the responses, we were actually participants, and Wynne, you know, was a participant and organizer of a lot of this documentation, Pat Mezerly, our school psychologist, also played a role in kind of the response to active shooting, and so, we, we are definitely, we've been part of this, this work, so.
So, was it FEMA that was here, or was that?
No, that was not FEMA, but FEMA was a sponsoring organization, I'm going to get it wrong, I don't know if it was the CIA or FBI, it was a collaborative effort-
Right, right, right.
Where they put on, you know, you know, a, a series of looking at how we can ensure schools are safe-
Okay, and they went to misreport, that's cool.
Yeah, that's right.
I think Homeland Security.
Right.
Homeland Security is right.
Homeland Security is right, yeah.
And it was, it was, it was, it was complicated to get into some of those, I mean, it was, there was some security just to get into the, get into the, the conference or the workshop, so.
Well, the results are on the web, actually.
Yeah, that's right.
I've got, just a general observation, working in the kitchen, in the cafeteria area, where the kids are in that room for a good part of two hours a day, which is a good chunk of a school day, just an observation that not all of the folks that are in that room have what I would consider proper training-
Mm-hmm.
-in crisis emergency situations.
Yeah.
Only the cafeteria monitors that are just, you know, a couple hours a day-
Yeah.
-five days a week on employees, and also that the crisis response team meetings are all scheduled in that same block, and my coworker is on the team, she very rarely is able to make those meetings, because she can't prep lunch and do it at the same time, just an awareness that scheduling those meetings at rotating times during the day would offer a, you know, better chance of her being able to attend, and we'd just like to suggest that training be offered for the folks that are actually in the cafeteria helping monitor the kids.
I mean, do substitute teachers get trained on that?
What we do is when we do orientation with them, again, orientation, highest numbers are done at the beginning of the year, but we also know that employees come and go, and substitutes come and go, so we, we do have training as they come in, and that's part of the requirement, if they want to be, you know, obviously, we have finger, we have to do our finger, the background checks-
Backgrounds.
-checks, and fingerprints, and all of that, so that's included in the orientation, it's also, there's other things around sexual abuse and things that we are required to do, so there's a whole kind of, you know, onboarding for those practices. We go over, again, and I think to Lisa's point is, and this is the part of the issue that happens, in that it's not okay for us just to say, oh, the information that you need around a crisis is on a, and on the yellow page of paper by the door, well, that's great, but when things all start happening, you know, you're not going to be able to go to it and read it, you're going to have to know that what clear the hall means, and what secure the building means, you know, et cetera. So, we need to practice it, and part of the change in, in our traditional ten required fire drills a year that are required by principals, now we can integrate different crises into them, so we could do, and I don't like the word active shooter, but we could do, and we have actually done one, in, I, I don't know that we did one in your school, but we did one here, a simulation here in, in Tavon, that doesn't mean the kids need to know about it, but it's our ability to respond. So, how often we practice, how often we inform, how often we're thinking about it is critical, and we, we never will get one hundred percent to a, of a crisis team present, it just doesn't happen, and part of the, part of the, the beauty of the tabletop is to say, of this group, you know, you're not here, and you're not here, and you might be the one who's most, you know, knowledgeable and in charge, it's going to be important then to say, Diane, okay, you're in charge, what are you going to do, or who is in charge? So, those are really important pieces, and the same thing that happens in the cafeteria, I think rightfully so, and again, I, I made note of that, our meeting times, Wynne did this for me for the last two years, I had done them previously, and I, I worked hard to try to be mindful to get everybody involved, but we're in the process with Krista Chambers helping, we didn't come up with our new times, so.
Are the, are the sub, substitute teachers reoriented in a?
Every year, they have to go through that, through a, another, a re-up, if they're interested in subbing, they got to come back on our list, they all have to come, they usually come during our, around our teacher orientation days, they all come in, and they're briefed on, you know, substitute-related duties now. That, I would say, still remains what I would say a higher risk, if we're going to rely on the substitute to carry out everything that we want, it's, it's, we're putting an awful lot of pressure and demand on them, and so, part of our dialogue is that, you know, if Elizabeth is next to me as a classroom teacher and I'm a sub, there's some obligation to help, you know, support to the best of, in this case, her ability to help me, you know, substitute teacher, ensure that my students are, are okay and being safe, so that might be opening up the door and saying, you, we're, we're insecure the school, you need to do the following things, or whatever.
I also ask teachers in their sub folders that they leave to, to write information such as, you know- as, you know, the packet is by the door, take, if you haven't read it, take a few minutes to read it, and here's where my emergency bag is, you know, placed here in the room, and here's any important things you need to know about, you know, parents who might not be allowed to come pick up students, or, so we do ask teachers to leave that. They typically have a folder that has important information about things, as well as health concerns, allergies, and things of that nature.
You know, on my list, and with Krista, has been that there's other entities that need to know more about security. Certainly, the folks that are shorter-term volunteers, our mentors are areas of concern. And I've included the board in that, too, because it's likely if you were at a school and you heard, you know, secure the school, would you know what to do? I probably ought to be making sure you know what to do, or, you know, what does that mean?
Come to you.
Right, while you, that would be the wrong decision. You can't do that. So, you know, I think it's, it's really important that we are communicative about what we're trying to do.
I mean, the last time that we actually addressed this was in the context of a monitoring report. And we did a direct inspection, which I did on behalf of the board. Are we getting close to do, to do another direct inspection, which should be probably from somebody else, I would think, to get that exposure for the second board member?
So, remind me what you did exactly?
I went through the SEP.
Yeah.
And asked, it was mainly looking at the SEP, looking at some documents from some recent meetings of crisis teams, and then talking to, I think it was David that I talked to, and actually, some other folks in the schools.
Okay. So, that falls under?
I don't remember which monitoring report it is, it's a...
Was it protection?
It's probably, it could be treatment of staff.
Yeah. Maybe in both places, staff, probably staff.
I think it was in that context, but I don't know.
Is that the second meeting in August?
Yeah, so, well, I mean, we could do everything else, but.
Well, again, I think it's an important component from an ongoing basis. It's an unfortunate situation that we need to really be.
Well, I think we're due, especially because of things that have been going on, to have an inspection again. See if I can find where that is.
Martin, while you're looking, so David, will we expect to have you revisit this with some?
Write off with some costs, I, I've been working.
And also maybe what the city is agreeing to support and so forth?
Yep.
You have it there, Martin?
I'm not a very fast reader, so no.
It was one of the components of evidence that was included in our adherence to the safety, safety plans, I think, so. And as a result, we dug, the board wanted to do.
Yeah, it's 2.24. Superintendent shall not allow staff to be unprepared to deal with emergency situations.
2.2, yeah, treatment of staff.
It does, the inspection doesn't have to happen before that meeting necessarily. We can go over the rest of it.
We can go through it and then assign it kind of at that time. Good idea.
That's actually a perfect segue to the report for a second. But you see lines underneath of the monitoring, which Delina has so appropriately reminded me on a regular basis. So, we typically have had two board members under each one of those, just to kind of, you know, be targeted to help with that. So, perhaps as we continue, maybe there's areas where, I don't know how you wish to do that, Elizabeth, but if there's an area, I suppose that people are interested in being part of that. I guess Dan maybe needs a little explanation what that means. Before it goes to the board, usually what there's been is a review of that. And so, that two board members actually have some additional information that can be presented to the rest of the board. So, there's a little deeper look by the, by the board, to board members, that allow that to happen. So, anywhere you see a line is generally what we've done in the past, if that continues to be the desire of the board.
Is that on our agenda tonight?
It's not, but it's, it's the, the, because we redrafted or updated this, you know, from the last, or should I say, Delina did this for us, it would probably be mindful that, we can put it on the agenda, but.
Okay. Yeah, I'd probably, I'd probably just ask people to take a look, and if you have a specific interest, to indicate that to Delina, and then wherever we have gaps, we could fill it in, maybe the August meeting.
Yeah, be great.
All right, thanks, David, for that.
Thank you.
We will move on to Agenda Item Number 11, the Executive Limitations Policy Monitoring on Emergency Superintendent Succession.
So, it's fairly straightforward. I've made, you know, some just basic substitution here. Again, trying to be mindful of, in the event that I'm not around, you know, how is the district in a position to continue to be okay and function appropriately? I've made the substitution for the Assistant Superintendent to include still the business manager and the, in this case, the high school principal. So, naming Pat Burke and John Stewart as individuals that would carry that out. Again, remember that this is the work that we had said, that there'd be a review, pretty stringent review period by the board, so that this wouldn't just be an ongoing kind of, there's going to be, need to be some decisions and answers. And I have talked to John Stewart, and I have talked to Pat Burke about this. And they both understand the responsibility. I want to be a little bit clear about John Stewart, in that, again, I do feel I have some redundancy in the business office around financial ability to carry out duties, if he had to assume additional responsibilities. Also, I think a major component of succession is the financial acuity of the district. And the reason for the high school principal, number one, Pat Burke is a seasoned administrator, but he also has other assistant principals that would be able to step into his position and also be successful. And again, I say step in, there probably would be transitional duties that obviously each would maintain, probably.
So, are you saying they would do it in tandem?
They would, correct.
And that's a good point, Julie, because I thought we had language in here last time that said it would, they would, the plan would be for them to work in conjunction versus one of them, one or the other, but, and I thought we had that, and I couldn't find that in here. And I worked, Elizabeth and I worked on it last time. And maybe I'm, my memory is incorrect, but I thought that it said that they would work in conjunction with one another.
I don't, I don't recall that specific language, but just that we said two executives would serve as emergency successors, so it allowed a lot of different configuration options based on the individuals as well as the need.
Yeah.
I think the point that Diane's making, at least that I can resonate with, is that these two people are going to do it, you want to assure that your expectation is that doing this cooperatively, and if that doesn't end up being a turf war kind of thing, or something like that, that that's not going to be an acceptable outcome. I mean, it may take two people to cover the tasks and the knowledge, but they have to, they have to be compatible enough that they're going to appear to be one.
Yeah. Well, again, they're both identified, they both are knowledgeable, they both are in the situation.
No, I accept that, I think they're as good a choice as anything you could possibly come up with, but.
I think the 60-day, you know, the review period that's in here is, would be, from my perspective, any board would, it would be extremely beneficial to say then how duties are going to be shared.
Well, it says at least 60, so my presumption is if we got any sense that 60 is too long to wait, we're not going to wait for 60 days.
Yeah. Well, again, that was, that was more of a, worst-case, outer.
No, I understand.
That actually did address, I think, Dan, that, I'm not sure if you were in the meeting where this was originally discussed, but it did address, putting even a timeframe on it, addressed the fact that we've had some history within the district with a shared leadership position that was, you know, fairly protracted and challenging.
No, it's, I don't have any quarrel with the way it's done, other than make sure the expectations are clear. Then there are some pitfalls in being too loose about the specification. There are also some problems in being too tight about the specification, so.
Yeah.
Good. Any other comments or questions? So, if we look at the monitoring report, is David's interpretation reasonable?
Yes.
I can sense this, yes. Adequate data?
Yes.
Supporting? And in compliance?
Yes.
All right.
I have a quick question. Since we did this now, do you want to do it again in October, or is that not, thank you?
No.
I think we're good.
Great, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 13, Accept the Terms of Computer and Bus Lea, oh, I'm sorry, to 12. Superintendent Evaluation 2.9 Communication and Support to the Board and Action Required. I'll give a quick recap here. The board had an opportunity to meet David and discuss the executive limitations, I mean, the superintendent evaluation, communication, and support to the board policy, and as well as some really executive leadership competencies. And you've had an opportunity to hear the board feedback. A quick recap on that, if I can, on behalf of the board, that there's general consensus that we, the board feels you've become very confident and comfortable in your leadership role as superintendent, and have made progress in several areas identified. We feel you are compliant with the policies governing superintendent performance, which include 2.9, 3.2, and 3.4, but notably the policy regarding communication and support of the board. And we are evaluating you for the period that really is ending June 30th of this year. A couple of the areas that you did receive additional feedback, the board recognizes strengths and assets of yours in the area of interpersonal skills, specifically building organizational relationships and inspiring trust, and want to commend you on several areas there. In the area of motivation, particularly in the area of driving for stakeholder success. In the area of self-management, with your emphasis on career and self-direction. And the work ethic that you specifically set for yourself and for others. And we've actually added another area that includes empowering others. In the area of developmental needs, the feedback is focused on within the area of thinking, seasoned judgment, and obviously, some of that comes with time. In the area of visionary thinking, we've provided some feedback to focus on. In the area of strategic management, specifically in the driving execution, and really challenged you in terms of effective delegation and holding your team accountable. In the area of communication, high impact delivery, have seen some great progress, and commend you on that, and continue your efforts there. And we have added the area of shaping strategy, and with the expectation that the public's investment in South Burlington will result in continued excellence in education. And we really look for you to kind of wisely leverage both internal and external talent to develop those strategies, to achieve competitive advantage, and to really translate those into specific objectives. So, not to do your whole review, but you've gotten, I think, some very positive and actionable feedback, and we appreciate all your hard work.
I appreciate the feedback very much, so. Helpful, helpful process. I'm happy that you took the time, proud that you took the time. I know you worked at this, and I very much appreciate it. I think it's part of the modeling that I think is also part of what you asked me to do, the same thing. So, I appreciate the feedback that you've given me, and the opportunity to be in this position. I'm proud to be here, and hope to continue to have positive success for this district well into the future. Thank you.
Any other comments? I know part of your compensation last year was a variable component tied to merit pay, which represented $3,500. And you did get some feedback that two of the things that you were, the board challenged you with was really developing significant progress on the metrics associated with the ends policies, as well as looking at some of the areas that we had identified in terms of executive leadership competencies. So, do I have a motion in terms of the recommendation on the superintendent's 2012, 2013 merit pay?
I haven't been, I wasn't there at the meeting, so I'm unable to make that motion.
So, you needed a motion to adjust the level of it, is that what it is? Okay, so, just reminded, the maximum was 35?
$3,500.
Okay, so, my, I meant, I moved that we award $2,500 to that end, withholding the $1,000, primarily because of the concerns we have in the areas of metrics and delegation?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
David, that, that really does represent a significant contribution in.
Very much appreciate it.
We appreciate that as well. As far as the 2013, 2014 compensation, I know in terms of our budgeting, we had a budget process that really put in no additional compensation for all of our employee groups. After the budget was approved by our community, we were able to, we had some things go the district's way in terms of some of the tax rates that the state set, in terms of some areas, some new hires that were able to come on at a slightly lower level. So, we've been able to identify some areas that allow a little bit of movement. So, I have a recommendation or a motion in terms of an adjustment to David's base compensation for the school year 2013 and 14?
Yes, we just need to get those numbers in front of us, right? Does anybody have them?
I move that we increase David's compensation by 2.1%.
I'll second that.
Any comments? I'd like to offer up, actually, the potential to adjust it by 2.5%. Really, on the basis that we've asked David to step up to some significant responsibilities. And really, he's the CEO of the district, and I think the, I think the expectations of both the district and of this board reflect the need for some competitive compensation. I'll open that up, if anybody wants to consider modifying the motion.
I'll make the motion to amend that to make it 2.5%.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, I think from a procedural standpoint, we have to take, have you withdraw your motion?
Okay.
Are you okay with that, Julie?
Well, I thought we were going to amend it, but it doesn't matter. It's okay.
You're right.
Yeah, I gotta go through, I gotta go through training.
Whatever works.
Okay, so, we have an active motion on the table for a base compensation adjustment of 2.5%. And a second for that? Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. And I think we need to discuss merit compensation as well, which is really a variable component associated with some specific objectives. The board specifically has identified a couple areas, David, and one is we need specific metrics on, on the monitoring policies in place this year. And the second area is really effective delegation to key members of your team, and with deliverables, and, and holding folks accountable to those as well. We think you have a really talented team, we're really proud of all of the district's employees, particularly our administrative team. And we also know you have a really big job, so you being effective is, is going to count on you being able to delegate as well. So, I will make a motion, I don't know if I can do that, but I'll make a motion that we actually propose merit opportunity tied to those deliverables for the superintendent of $4,500 this year.
That's forty, forty-four?
$4,500, yep.
If you want to make it really clear, I'll make that motion, you can ask for that motion. So, I don't know that the chair.
Can make the motion, can make a motion.
Can make a motion? It's just that, just practice was he never did.
It's cleaner, yeah. Rich chose often to not, yes.
If you're asking somebody to make that motion, I'd be happy to make that motion.
Okay, well, go that way. I'll ask someone to make that motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Call second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And then it also is the board's. And then it also is the Board's intent to fund a 401K with the same amount as last year, $3,000. So, we thank you for all your contributions.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and effort.
Just a quick question. I assume we're going to write out more specifically, the specifics of the merit pay. I mean, you've talked on generally...
I'll take care of that and circulate that.
I think that's appropriate.
All right. Now, on to Agenda Item Number 13, Accept the Terms of Computer and Bus Lease.
This was a question, I think, that also came up in the Board packet, or in your follow-up. And the lease information did not make it on to the agenda initially, I believe, but it was included in your packet, because that's when we came together. And so, that was in part in play what, what went on with the difference in the agenda and your, and the information in your packet. I don't know if there's specific questions that the Board has on this. There is action required. I also know that with lease terms and what's on the program, you know, do we have a calendar for that? The answer is yes, and we will, John Stewart and his office has a calendar of all of our lease obligations that are, that are pending. This particular one came on because it's not due until three weeks from now, but we aren't meeting, and so that's why it appears. The resolve to this is that we will be posting, and I will be sharing with you kind of our, kind of the lease, the calendar as you know it. And I've seen a lot of these come before you, so there's a little bit more planned and informed information.
David, in this particular one, this is simply the next phase of what's going on?
That's correct.
These have been negotiated before, as I think it says?
That's correct.
So, you just need approval because of the dollar amounts that are involved?
And all of these are in the budget, correct?
Correct.
And do we need to be specific in, say, air handling system?
I don't, I don't...
Bus lease and computer lease?
I don't think you need to do that at all. They're all part of that, the lease agreement. There's been prior approval to this. Again, it's, it's in front of you because of the, you know, our policy governance rules around this, you know, the limitations.
Any other questions on this item? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the terms of the computer and bus lease?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, setting the agenda for the August 7th meeting.
So, one of the things I heard, you know, I don't know who brought it up, but, you know, kind of future F-35, I heard Chamberlain kind of pop into that, and I wondered, I just wanted to, my plan is, at this point, and I could, actually, we can make it an agenda item, but I feel like there's a Phase 1 of 2020 that needs to come out. So, part of that does deal with Chamberlain. We could just do an update on the current realities of Chamberlain, if you want to be very, very specific and not as much into the, kind of the future of the district. I think we're getting into a place here where, you know, I, as your superintendent, am going to need to be helping to create the vision forward. Some of it may be somewhat uncomfortable, but it's, I think, needed. And part of that, I think, plays into what, I think it was you, Martin, around, you know, the current realities around some of our schools. So, I don't, I don't really know if you'd like to just focus on Chamberlain right now as a result of kind of the conversation that we just had, or would you like me to just begin the process to look at it more glob, you know, things more globally for the district, which is, which is coming anyway, but...
Well, I guess I, I'm a little concerned, here's, well, I'm more than, more than a little concerned, but that we have this report that came out showing correlation between noise and learning and cognition. That's one thing, but also, it's more what I've heard also from staff at Chamberlain, and I understand a couple people testified or spoke, and testified, but spoke yesterday about, about problems. And, but I've, people I've heard from, including Holly, when, when this first came up, the F-35s, during the process of drafting the letter, I went and talked to Holly. I don't recall if I talked to other people or not over there, but I very well may have. But essentially, the response was, it's not a big deal. I mean, yes, the jets are loud, they come over, we stop talking for 10 seconds, and then start, pick up where we left off, which in this day and age, in some respects, could be a good thing to learn, is how to be interrupted and stay on task. But, but the point was, the message I got was that this is not a big issue, but then yesterday, there were a couple people, at least, who were giving a different message. So, I kind of, I do want to kind of get to the bottom a little bit of, of the noise factor particularly, because I know there's other issues longer term in the next six years, seven years. But, but that's just one, I think, that we need to address a little sooner.
Yeah, so I think, again, that's why I asked that.
Again, just since I was at, I mean, I don't know if Diane was there at that time, but the people that I heard talk mostly talked about the fact that within the building, when you're inside, it was annoying, but it was tolerable. The crisis issues, the acute issues occurred outside, in the playground situation, or a transition from the building to transportation. That, those were the acute situations that were mentioned. And there were people in the neighborhood who weren't exactly in the school, but talked about their children in childcare situations, with similar kinds of responses, okay? Few people specific to the school location, but there are others that were in that general neighborhood. So, there were probably half dozen people that raised concerns, but it was exterior dominantly, not interior.
And it's increased.
But I don't know where these numbers are taken from and where they have to maintain. So, I think, I think we need to find, acquire some sort of competency and knowledge in what's going on there.
Yeah, for current and, and for future.
Yeah, for the current situation.
Because it's going to be comparable. Yeah, I mean, because there could be, is, if we do find out that this is a seriously disrupting issue, and it makes it harder for the kids to learn, even the exposure at recess or, or before school, I mean, are, is that something that, you know, we won't be in a position to put into a letter right now regarding mitigation, but it's something we can go to the Air National Guard and explain, you know, we've looked into this further. These are times during the day where we're particularly sensitive to, to noise. Is there anything, I don't know, I mean, it sounds like they do some adjusting of when they fly. Can there be a further adjustment to accommodate, you know, the going to school time, part of the recess time? I don't know. So, I think that that would be, I, I don't know how to approach it, I don't know, because it's going to, I think it's, it's understanding more from the people who are there and getting a little bit more of that feedback. Is there, yeah, I'm not sure how best to proceed.
I think you're right on. Again, if you just, in simplistic terms, think about the evolution of the airport and Chamberlain School, the airport started, or before, if you recall, you know, obviously, it doesn't take a lot of research to go back. If you went to the 20s, what was the kind of traffic and the size of the airport, and what was happening, and what was the frequency of traffic, and what was the noise associated to the school when it was built, and then progressed through until 2013, and you would see, obviously, you know, you can draw the map, continued increased traffic, continued increased technology, increase, you know, jet engines, you know, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, I think that, you know, and then noise abatement regulations and requirements, I mean, having, you know, spent a fair amount of time in and around the airport and deciding when you can and can't take off, there's noise abatement regulations. And so, I think those are always available to us to revisit, whether it's air guard or commercial traffic. There's a discussion that I think that can happen. And I think down, down to the future is, what is the expected, you know, long-term plan for the airport with, in regards to, you know, increased carriers, you know, increased departure and arrivals, which then continue to compound the issue on whether or not it's, you know, remains just a school that we want to continue to educate.
Just the noise factor alone, and it could be less enrollment from that neighborhood if we're losing houses.
Exactly, that's right.
So, that, but it just seems just, we need to take stock of where we are right now, a little bit more than what was just said last night, and make sure that there's not something that we're missing, that we should be doing to alleviate the issue.
So, I think we put it on, we put it on, and, you know, give you an update. Again, I don't think it's at all going to be anywhere near as complete as you might like. I don't know that I'm going to be able to get a lot.
Well, I think it's going to be a case of starting and developing the needed, needed awareness and competence.
And I don't think it has to be on the next agenda. I mean, I'm saying, I'm thinking this is more of a future agenda item, so we can get more feedback from the teachers when they're back in school as well.
It's up to you. I think that it probably would be timely with regard to some of the things that are going on to, to the community in Chamberlain. It might be good for us to have it as a discussion. It's a question to you. And I think, from my perspective, it might assist me in helping to think also and provide you with kind of the forward objective for the district. So, I think it might, it might be timely to at least start on it.
But to Martin's point, I mean, it's, it's a heightened awareness there. I think if we got the feedback from the staff and from the parents and that kind of stuff, with this new level of awareness, okay, and got a little bit of that, so that you could get an integrated result, some feel for what the variance in this thing, and what seems to be the norm, the, you know, the typical response, and what are the serious issues, and what suggestions do people have, would be helpful, right? So, trying to do it before that is perhaps, you know, trying to go up around with your eyes closed, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if they could wait until there's a better chance to get it from parents, information from parents and teachers, I think it should.
I think the point being that it's...
I don't think it's critical for, you know, the F-35 purpose.
I agree.
Because that's all, that's all been out there. You go ahead, you're up to it.
I think an interesting fact for me that would, would help is that, those of you who know some of the air traffic that has happened out of the air guard, the F-4 was one of the loudest aircraft that, that was ever around the airport. And so, the F-16s were, which I believe, I don't quote, I believe, much quieter.
There were people who had been long-term residents of that area who testified about the evolution of what's going on.
That's right, and I think they're...
And they vividly remember the F-4s.
Right, and so, I, you know, that's all part in play to, you know, to the, to the issue, but it's all, overall, just increase in, in noise, and what has that done or not done to our students as far as being learners? So, I think it's, so what I'm hearing is we'll put it off somewhere in the start of the school year, a September meeting, maybe, that September, October, we'll have that on the agenda, but it will be kind of close to the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I would suggest more October than September.
Right, and we'll be able to maybe collect some, some information. I'll get somebody to delegate somebody, how about to get on that?
I'm going to miss this meeting, Delina, just so you know. I'm going to miss this meeting, August 7th. You know that already, yeah? Okay.
Do we, one topic I had wondered about is, do we have a draft of the RFP for the direct inspection?
Not yet. It's, I'm delayed in getting that to you, so it is forthcoming.
Can we add that to the agenda if it, if it's either a draft that's been reviewed by a couple of Board members to go out, or at least the draft could be reviewed here?
Yep.
What did you call it, Elizabeth?
RFP for direct inspection.
Yeah.
Evaluation.
Yeah.
Any other changes or additions, deletions to the agenda?
Add on about the resolution, or the approval of payments, the working...
Yeah, this is, in the documentation for things that are over the 50,000 mark, there's a resolution that we usually staple with it that says, you know, delegation, and so that, that needs to be updated because it's, there's named individuals in there that are no longer, or positions that are no longer there. So, we'll need, we'll need to make that change. We can do that in, in the upcoming meeting.
Speaking of resolutions, a different kind of resolution, are, are we doing, or do we wish to do anything to send to the School Board Association for bringing up at their annual meeting regarding resolutions to propose to the legislature?
That should be on our next agenda.
Yeah, if I recall, it's usually...
What's the cutoff date?
Usually, that, you know, probably the August, by end of August, you know, is when they, you know, are putting that all together. I haven't asked, I haven't seen anything either from Steve around the request. I could have missed it, did you?
Well, they sent out an email requesting...
Yeah.
Are you getting those things?
Just recently.
Within the last couple of weeks.
Are you getting, is he getting emails from the Vermont School Board? No.
No, not from Vermont's.
Yeah, it was when I was on vacation, I think.
You mean their warrior meals?
Oh, yeah.
To save the day, is the, it's the conference is the 24th and 25th of October.
That's usually when that's done.
Could we consider inviting Steve to this meeting, just to give us an update of what's going on with the FDA, and then get, then it might prompt our thinking around resolutions?
That wouldn't be bad, if we haven't really heard what's going on there.
Yeah, I think it would be a helpful update.
So, see if Steve could come on our August 7th meeting.
I know you're missing Julie.
Yeah, I know.
A few of us have in the past, as many as...
Really?
Okay, so, all right, I'll set on the agenda?
Yes.
All right, any future agenda items that should be added?
I have a question, I mean, this is a time to raise this, and I don't know how I missed this before, but I did. This is our big yellow future agenda thing. I don't see any ends monitoring on there, and I don't know if that's intentional, or, because it's been a very long time since we've seen ends monitoring report, and I have to think that...
What are you talking about?
Monitoring the ends. Remember, we've gotten about a year and a half ago, the...
I don't think we took anything off, so...
Well, I'm just, I mean, am I, has it been so long since you don't, that you don't remember what they are?
I remember, I was just trying to figure out what you, yeah, 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 okay.
And we had a monitoring report, it's got to be...
Did we do that by committee?
No, no.
Yes, we did decide to do that.
Yeah, we did decide to do that.
The calendar changed.
Does that mean that we're not monitoring the ends as they are right now?
Well, they're in, I'm just trying to get the one on the old one here.
Oh, I'm sure Stuart would be happy about that.
Ends monitoring, yeah.
I guess, I mean, on the point of, we're going to have a committee looking at the ends again, I don't want to hold up monitoring, I mean, on the ends for that.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think we should add it.
If that was kind of the understanding, then, then that was a misunderstanding.
So, we'll put, we'll get them back in then.
Okay.
And they'll bring you back to the August 7th.
Do you think, Elizabeth, just since we're talking about the yellow calendar, that it would make sense to do this as a group instead of email Delina, because she might get five emails that say everyone wants to do asset protection?
I doubt it.
I just threw that one out there.
I doubt it.
But you know what I mean, Brad, because I know, I think in the past, we did it as a group, and we just put our names next to them. It just seemed really efficient to do it that way, rather than...
Well, there's 12 of them. I mean, if each one of you kind of said, you know...
I want asset protection.
I don't.
I'll do that with you.
I did that with you, Delina.
And I want curriculum development. I, I get to have curriculum development because I took asset protection.
There you go.
I do not want that. Where is curriculum development?
Oh, November.
Can I do that one with you?
That's, that's great.
So, I have Martin at Curriculum Development and Review.
Dan wants financial planning and budgeting.
I don't think you could volunteer, you're telling me.
You had asset protection?
I'd love to have that one.
Yes, and Julie.
You'll be sorry.
I'll, I'll do that one.
I'll do with anyone.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth.
I, I think I'm up with that.
That was on...
Is that 2.4 and 2.5 that you're doing?
Well, I've got, I've got 2.5, I've put in.
Oh.
Do you want to do both?
So, 2.5 was Dan and Elizabeth?
They kind of go together.
Yeah.
Just saying.
I don't think so.
Could, 2.1, Treatment of Parents and Guardians, I, I don't...
Diane?
I'll do that with you, Diane.
Julie?
How many do each of us have to do?
I'll do 3.2, Accountability of Superintendent.
Is that, is that one that we all should do? No, that's fine. I mean, we'll, we all end up doing them anyway, but it's like...
So, Elizabeth on that one?
Did you say you did 2.4 or 2.5, Elizabeth?
I, I put myself for 2.5.
All right, well, there's two, two times that we do 2.4. I'm happy to do one of the two fours.
One is just the odd, so I'm not sure it needs a line for anyone there.
So...
The line is out.
Did you have anybody doing 3.2 with you, Elizabeth?
No.
I'll do that one with you.
So Dan, you're all right to do financial conditions with Martin?
We can't do treatment of-
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
And that would-
I don't remember.
So we're missing global executive constraint?
I'll do compensation and benefits with somebody.
I'll do that with you, Elizabeth.
Where's the, okay.
So treatment of community, I think, I think I did that last, so I don't wanna do that again.
Aren't we sort of doing that one as a group? Is that the one that we've been working on?
Well, it doesn't mean that you aren't gonna do them. It's kind of the-
No, we're still doing it as a group. It's the initial look to expedite it for the group.
So do you wanna go on treatment of staff this time, Martin?
Um, sure.
Didn't we just, I, I'm having like a flashback.
Well, we've been doing treatment of staff for the past seven or eight months, so.
It's, it's not been completed yet.
Right, 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 right. We should be very close, right?
So aren't we, since we've been doing that as a big group already, rather than have making more?
Well, let me ask, is it still my problems that have been hanging it up all then?
I think we're close to resolve now.
Then put me down and I'll look at it in advance. I'll do it alone.
And that was treatment of staff, right?
Yeah.
We still have finances.
So that was Martin, and who was outside on that treatment of staff?
Just me. I'm the problem child in that one, so I'll just figure that out.
I'd be happy to work on that.
Yeah?
Why don't we go ahead and publish this and we'll see where the gaps are and-
I think that you need a second for treatment of community and you need, I put my name down for 2.4, the first 2.4.
Yeah, with Dan.
Got you on that one.
Oh, okay, that's with Dan as well, okay. Well, that was just, that's everybody.
That's such a big one. We can just, it's so easy, yeah.
And the same thing with succession.
Oh, wait, there's treatments on parents and guardians.
I think Martin and I were on that one.
Oh, that's you and I. Oh, no, that's Dan and I, treatment of parents and guardians.
Oh, I missed that.
Diana and Julie, yes.
Oh, that's Diane. I put D, so I don't know. I should, now I have to be careful, right?
DB.
Maybe, you can just read back what you have and walk.
So, um, this is the community. I have Dan. This is Martin did it last time. On the treatment of staff, I have Martin.
So you need a second on treatment of community, right?
And staff.
Unless you're doing that by yourself, right?
I mean, I can, if it hasn't changed from what we've all seen a lot recently.
I just need a second on treatment of community and then it's good.
Elizabeth, Diane?
What's it say about treatment of?
August.
Yeah, that's, that's why I don't wanna do it.
Training you with the community.
I'm not gonna be here for that meeting. That's why I can't do it.
I'm not gonna mentally be here.
You can do your work in advance, Julie.
Well, that's true, I can.
See?
All right.
I'm talking to Martin.
All right.
Treatment of communities, Julie.
Excellent. That's it, huh?
Succession.
Is somebody on curriculum with you?
Uh, yes, Diane.
Oh, that's-
Okay, so, uh, what about, um, ends monitoring? We swapped that in for emergency superintendent?
I think they're gonna put it in up on the ends, the whole thing for ends.
Yeah.
We don't need a subcommittee for that, do we?
No, I think everybody has to do that slog through that one. I mean, all get to do that as a big happy family.
So my, my only request then for that first one, treatment of community, is that we have it before I go on vacation.
Cause you're not gonna do it on vacation.
On the fourth or, I think, fifth actually, of August.
So to do it before we can?
If you can do that, then I can do it. Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Diane.
Is it on the agenda now, for the seven, meeting on the seventh?
Yes, it's on the agenda for the seventh.
Yep. So future agenda items, we have feedback process, um, and the tuition student private thing on this so far. Anything else that needs to be on a future agenda?
So I would put the F-35 on there just to, or not the F, I'm not, no, not F-35, Chamberlain.
Chamberlain, okay. So we've got a placeholder. All right. Uh, agenda item 16, consider the meeting, uh, minutes of meeting June 19th and 24th. Uh, we look at the 19th. Any comments or changes?
Uh, I do have one.
What'd you get?
Uh, well, on page three, I'm sure I probably sounded this inarticulate. But I'd like to now correct my inarticulateness that I saw. Mr. Lilon asked that the board have a conversation about a proposal to bring to the city about what the district would. That sounds just like me, but I always count you guys to clean me up a little bit.
Actually, this is, this is exactly what I remember you saying, so I'm sorry.
Oh, we're not allowed to make it actually make sense? Like, what I meant to, no, I'm pretty sure I must've said that we needed to have a, a board position to take to the city about safety zones.
So.
Around the school.
So we'll change that to the, that the board have a position?
That the board develop a position
Develop a position.
Uh, to take to the city regarding safety zones around schools. That simplifies, and that, I think, is what it really was all about. And I'm sure that I finally, after talking for five minutes, summed it up to that succinct or thing by that time, Meg was the sum.
Well, all right, with that change, are the June 19th minutes approved by consensus? We'll take that. Look at the June 24th, any, um, minutes, any changes? By consensus, those are approved as well.
No, I, I was just making a suggestion that, uh, if you, if you imagine yourself picking this up a year from now and asking who, who, who my, who made my recommendations and who I am and all that stuff, it's very hard. So I would just suggest that in the future, if there's a way to make it more specific as to who I and my and all those things are. I mean, if, if the purpose is to have these as a record that can be resurrected. But I, I'm not advocating a change at this one right now, just making a suggestion in the future about how to
Fine, yeah.
Structure those.
You know, bringing those recommendations on specifically, that's perfect. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Um, an action is required. Any changes? All right, questions? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda of three new?
To add that one?
Yeah.
Oh, so we do have to amend it?
Yeah, including, uh, the part two of the individual of the new hire. That was on your, again, this was, this was, this was, this is my request as a result of, you know, recently meeting with this individual and also the board not meeting again until August.
Okay, so we are amending the agenda to include Kimberly Adet in a, uh, .8 position of mathematics coach for the district. And this individual's filling a position that was one year only last year. Uh, so with that amendment, uh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for these four new hires as presented? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any questions, uh, that were not addressed on the accounts payable, account payable orders? All right, we don't really, we don't approve those, so.
No. The 19th's on there because it exceeds the allowable limit, so that's 18.
Should that have been listed as an action? I guess it kind of is.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we have an accounts payable check for fifty seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents to the Howard Center for Human Services. And consistent with our policy, this needs board action. Any questions or comments?
And then you have the SunTrust leasing, that's the house culture.
Uh, that's not on the agenda.
That was action already. Wasn't that action already? That's what it, wasn't that 13?
The SunTrust leasing, I think, was in there, but wasn't that right, Delana? I know this is-
13 was the resolution that's in the blue folder.
Right, for the lease agreements.
Right.
Right?
And this was the payment for the current lease agreements for this next year.
Uh-huh.
But the resolution was the one that's in the blue folder.
Gotcha.
That we had to wait for Steve to provide you with.
Right, for accuracy moving forward.
That's for the new lease. That's a new lease.
You approved it at the last meeting for the purchase of the bus and the computers, but you had to sign a resolution.
I see.
To allow me then to sign, yeah.
So we do not have, well, let's take, let's take agenda item 19 here first. Uh, do I have a motion to approve, um, the AP order to the Howard Center?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is it approved?
I abstain.
So how do you wanna handle the, um, are you, are you abstaining?
Yeah, I abstain.
So we have one abstention on that. Um, how do you wanna handle the SunTrust?
Yeah, so it's the payment in the amount of the 294,847 and sixty-three cents to SunTrust Equipment Financing and Leasing. And again, it was included in the packet, but it didn't make it onto the agenda. It was included in your packet, the SunTrust, but it didn't get on the, onto the agenda. And part of that was, uh, again, it, uh, just didn't get to us before the agenda went out. So the, the agenda needs, needs to be amended and then the board needs to take action on that.
I just wanna find it in the packet here. Uh, where is it in the packet, David?
It's right here.
Yeah, it looks like that one.
Oh, I was looking at that one. So this was not the bus lease?
No, that, that was, that's the SunTrust one.
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah.
Put it in the already done category. Yes, there is. All right, so this is in reference to, um, the SunTrust Equipment Finance and Leasing, 294,847 dollars and sixty-three cents. And the specific, uh, items are listed below. Uh, do I have a motion to approve this leasing agreement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, one thing I'd, I'd like to make sure we do, David, is just, uh, maybe include a, um, uh, an item. I think I've seen this somewhere where it says amendments to agenda.
Yep, just list it in case, if we have any, then we call it out.
Yeah, if we could do that in the future. All right, um, Martin, you're gonna handle the board's self-evaluation?
Yes, I am. He's all good.
Why don't we take a few minutes and, uh, fill out the self-evaluation form for this meeting? I have an extra one here. Maybe I took those, Dan.
Oh, I see. You've been, you, you took them when you left.
Oh, oh, I did do that.
Sorry.
This is the lease, no, it's just the resolution to allow me then to sign those, what you guys did, so. Sorry for that. You should've amended it.
You're gonna get more papers than you could ever imagine.
I'm already wondering if I have to support, re-support my second floor with one, uh, more columns or something.
Okay, we have, uh, we have a disagree, uh, this is superintendent feedback, uh, from the meeting. I disagree on data reports were provided to board in advance of the meeting in support of its deliberations and required action. Uh, and we have two disagrees on board questions were first anticipated and secondly responded to in a thorough, timely manner. And a note on that is questions regarding tuition exceptions that we asked at the last meeting, uh, were not answered. We had to ask for that, for that again. So on the board, we have, it looks like all agrees except for a couple no opinions. I think we need to go into no opinions.
Seven, that's great, thank you.
Are we going back into executive session?
We weren't, we weren't planning on that.
Oh.
We can, we don't have it as an agenda either, unless you want to, certainly you can declare it and go back in, but.
Um, why don't we cover announcements?
Mm-hmm. So just a couple announcements. Um, remember that the steering committee meeting is coming up on Monday. And that's the fifth meeting, and it's at six o'clock, and that will be at City Hall. I don't exactly know.
Has, has an agenda been published for that?
The agenda has been pushed out.
In your envelope.
What envelope?
I thought at your place.
Who should've been in an envelope at your place?
Oh, your stuff is there.
I didn't have an envelope at my place.
No wonder. Sorry.
That was my fault.
Oh, Martin.
I moved you over to the next.
So Dan, the agenda for the steering committee?
Okay.
All that important stuff, I apologize.
So the agenda for the steering committee is in that. Um, the other part is I just want to let you know that the city manager interviewing process is beginning. I told you before, I was on that committee, and the first meeting of that committee starts, is tomorrow night, so I'll be at that, uh, tomorrow night.
Do you know how many applicants there are?
I don't. I don't know anything about it. Um, at this point, I'm just a, a individual member, and we're meeting with the committee tomorrow, so just wanted to let you know that. Other than that, uh, a lot of projects are going on, a lot of activity. Our, our upgrade at the high school and the electrical upgrade went well. Uh, we initially thought that was gonna be a couple of weeks, remember way back, and then it whittled down to, we were able to do it in about four hours. So we upgraded that major switchgear and significantly reduced our risk for, you know, power failure into the future with upgrading of older switch equipment. So that was a good process.
Is the elevator working yet?
Uh, the elevator is back in and, uh, and ready. It's not yet fully inspected, though. It has to go through all of the state inspections and all of that, but, uh, we are feeling that that will be 100% back. Had, you know, in order, all the inspections have to happen, and it's still pending visitations, so. So it's not in service. But it works.
Do we want to amend the agenda to add a brief executive session at the end of this meeting?
No.
Well, um, I will do, I'll do, no, what I said is I can do mine through, through email to you.
Okay.
And I would rather do that as opposed to add it to the end.
All right, so we won't amend that.
Yeah, I mean, it was just, it was, well, unless it's SBAA info.
I think we should do that. I think, it'll take five minutes.
I'll worry if that could be added to the agenda. Aren't we gonna be having executive sessions, sessions on Monday?
On Monday. Um, I'd have to, we'd have to amend the, the executive session, which we can do. I think it probably would be better to do it that way than to try to tack it on at the end of this agenda, probably. Your choice.
Well, we're just talking about adding a brief executive session at the end of this meeting. Um, Julie's for it, Martin is not, how about you?
Oh, no, I'm fine, I'm fine. I'm happy to go.